For March 19, 2024. Order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Dany?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Engstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. The first jox deposed. Point of order is the proposed budget under Finance Committee Chairman Laporte.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we will be going over the finance budget. And we'll have Todd kick that off or staff kick that off.
Good evening. On behalf of the Bartlett Police Department, Rob, Will, and I are very proud to present you with the overview of the proposed budget and answer any questions you may have. Our budget starts on page 205 if you'd like to follow along on your iPad. We are really proud of our accomplishments in the last year. These include fostering community partnerships, improving traffic safety, preventing and reducing crime, and promoting the professional development of our employees. Last year, the Village of Bartlett was awarded second place by the National Association of Town Watch in its population category for the 2023 National Night Out Celebration. Several members of the police department and the village's benefits coordinator received the Hannover Township Supervisor's Community Service Award for helping to coordinate the different villages' senior giving tree, toy drive, diaper drive, school supplies drive, and food drive to benefit Hannover Township and Wayne Township Pantries. Last year, the police department initiated over 8,000 traffic stops, 64 DUI arrests, and 278 aggravated speeding arrests to help keep our roadway safe. The police department was presented with the 2022-2023 Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge Second Place Award in our municipal category for departments with 51 to 65 officers. The police department also worked with Public Works, Streamwood, and Wayne to help improve the traffic safety at the intersection of Army Trail Road and Munger Road, trying to prevent commercial vehicles from driving down North Avenue and making our schools safer at Prairie View and Sycamore Trails Elementary Schools. Last year, our police department was dispatched to over 13,911 calls for service and also initiated over 21,000 calls for service. In 2023, the Part I and Part II crime rate was 2.4, which is 25% decrease from 2022. Last year, the police department partnered with the DuPage County Health Department to provide our residents with free Narcan kits. This was the first program of its kind in DuPage County before other police departments saw followed suit. In November, we were really proud that we earned our eighth reaccreditation Cale Award. And our police department is also only one of a few Illinois agencies to train its officers in ICAT, which is designed to equip our officers with the necessary tools, skills, and options to resolve situations involving individuals safely and effectively who are unarmed or armed with non-firearm weapons and who may be experiencing a mental health or other crisis. Overall, our budget has increased by 5%, mostly due to increased DUCOM fees, pension obligations, equitable sharing purchasing requests, and the Uniform and Bulletproof Vest Allowance. There are no changes to the police department's authorized staffing of 63 sworn officers and 18 non-s sworn officers. It has actually remained the same since the 2022-2023 budget. I would now like to turn over the presentation to Will, who will provide you with an overview of the police department's capital outlay request detail.
The mayor and village board, I'm going to highlight the capital requests in our budget. The first item that we are requesting is two replacement vehicles for one patrol squad car and one directed patrol team squad car. Both of these vehicles are being replaced, that they meet the request and the requirement for high priority replacement based on mileage, age, and hours, and they also having a high amount of repairs associated with each. If we order these vehicles in May, we are hoping for about a six-month turnaround at this point for these vehicles. Prior to that, it was taking about 10 months to get a vehicle once they were purchased. Number two on our capital list is three AED machines and two AED training machines. The three AEDs would be replacements of outdated and discontinued AEDs. The training machines allow for us to train a larger class size, to be more efficient in training, and to allow for us to a more effectively trained police, village personnel, crossing guard, citizen police academies, and others. Currently, we have four trainers. If we have two additional, that would give us six for a class size of 12, which helps us to accommodate larger class sizes. These have been a very successful item for us. If you remember recently at the Streets of Bartlett and at the Jane Society, at the Jane Society of Metropolitan Chicago, we had two officers that were honored to receive a distinguished service award for their quick actions and life-saving measures that helped save the life of a parishioner who was in cardiac arrest. And we also had three employees that received a life-saving award for life-saving measures and helped save the life of an individual who was in cardiac arrest at a shopping center on September 8 of last year. We use these AEDs anywhere between eight to twelve times per year. And we are, like I said, they just want to benefit to us and to the community overall. Number three on our capital list is the COP FTO online portal. It's an online portal for electronically maintaining field training officer records. It's easily accessible to the probationary officers, field training officers and supervisors, improving transparency. It's something that's available to all of our employees that they can see at any time. And with the high frequency of training, it makes managing the program more efficient instead of printing copies and maintaining paper copies. And just for some perspective, we did train 11 officers in the last year, and we anticipate training six to 10 more in the upcoming year. And one of the things that's different than maybe in years past, we have 16 officers that are currently on probation. Each one of those probationary officers, the FTO has to do a monthly report for each, and this is just going to help to make a more efficient process overall. Number four, we're requesting three new evidence cameras and accessories, replacing our outdated cameras. The current cameras that we use are over 10 years old, and these will obviously have new technology that exists for better photographic evidence collection. Number five, this is going to be funded out of equitable sharing. And I'm sorry if I didn't mention the cameras were also going to be funded out of equitable sharing. The, we're requesting one Matrice 30T drone. This new drone would significantly improve our response capabilities. Our current drone cannot fly in snow or in rain, and it has a single flight time of 27 minutes. The Matrice 30T can fly in all weather conditions and will increase our single flight time to 41 minutes. We'll have six batteries. It takes two batteries per flight, so each will have three different occurrences of 41 minutes of flight time. The current drone has to be stored at the police department and has to be assembled prior to each deployment. The legs, propellers, and cameras cannot be attached to the drone while it's being transported. The new drone can be carried fully assembled in a Pelican case, allowing officers to deploy the drone at minutes. And we believe this will significantly increase our ability to deploy the drone. When time is of the essence, a lot of times when somebody's fleeing a scene or there's a missing endangered person, it's within those first few minutes. If we can have a drone accessible and ready to go, it's going to be the most effective for us. Right now, we have to go back to the police department. Somebody has to assemble it and bring it to the scene. And so this drone definitely impacts our overall capabilities.
It's replacing the 27-minute one?
Correct. And that drone is almost six years old right now. And we've just seen with the drone technology, the advancements increase so much. The camera is affixed with thermal imaging, obviously to help as well for missing endangered, anybody that's in a wooded area, things like that. But just the overall flight capabilities, the time that it can be in the air in the weather conditions, and just that rapid deployment, we feel is really beneficial. And we also, if some of you remember too, from the Fourth of July Fest, we can use it at, I believe this one was used by, we borrowed that from Hannover Township. It was very successful using it at the Fourth of July Fest. We can also use it for parades, any special events like that, that just gives us an extra eye and increases security and protection overall for us.
Did we originally get two drones?
We do have a smaller drone that has some capabilities to fly inside of a residence. And it's, and we use it for training as well. This was, this is a more kind of fully operational capable drone to use for deployments on calls for service and in the field.
Thank you.
And then number six on our capital request is the Speed Air Electric Air Compressor for the Police Department Building. This would be to replace the damaged air compressor inside of our police department. We use this in the range in the Sally Port and for the forensic room as part of our original needs assessment when the police department building was constructed. We looked at replacing the one that's damaged. It's obsolete at this point, and the request, or the equivalent was $10,000. So we found this compressor that was sufficient. It was recommended by Public Works and could also be installed by Public Works. We have 46 vehicles in our fleet. This gives us the opportunity in-house during winter months when tire pressure's low to be able to fill tires and use it on our gun range for cleaning weapons and other things. But I'd say primarily, we use this for our vehicles and for tire pressure. Anybody have any questions about any capital items?
Does the drone we are replacing have any resale value?
It does. It's still, it's still functional.
Yeah, the only thing about trustee Hopkins is we purchased it with equitable sharing funds. So any type, if we would were to resell it, we would have to replace those funds back to equitable sharing per the DEA rules. We would like to. That seems to be, when we were at the International Chiefs Association, Perv put on the Police Executive Research Forum, put on a presentation of a town that's using drones more and more, especially for high-profile situations, such as if there's an armed intruder, barricaded subject, nice to get the eyes in the air. And a lot of towns are even starting to use it if they're doing search warrants or entry, bringing the drone in there instead of putting the officers at risk. Okay, I would now like to turn over the presentation to Rob, who will provide you with an overview in regard to professional development and the professional associations.
Good evening. So training continues to be a priority for the police department and the police profession due to mandates through the Safety Act and recent increase in crime nationwide. It's more important than ever to make sure we have properly trained police officers on the street. At our department specifically, due to recent retirements, we've had a high level of turnover where we've lost years of experience. And we've replaced it with young, eager, motivated officers, but they need to be trained. They need to have the skills in order to do the job properly. In the last two years, we've actually hired and trained 23 new police officers, which, if you know, our authorized strength is 63. So over 30% of our police force has less than two years on. So a lot of training and mentoring taken place at our department on a daily basis. In the last fiscal year, 2324, we actually did over 17,000 hours of training for our sworn and civilian personnel that work for the police department. Even with all this, in this year's budget, we've managed to actually not add any additional training that we weren't doing in years past. We've done some cost-saving measures that have left us within the budget. One of the things we've done is we've offered our police department as a training site for outside vendors such as Northwestern, the FBI, to come in and utilize our facilities to do the training. And with that, we were able to send our officers through that training free of cost, saving thousands of dollars. Another thing we've done is we've really focused our training towards the training of instructors that already work for our police department. That provides them valuable skills, but then also allows them to train on a more frequent basis, our officers, instead of us having to send officers out into outside vendors to receive that training. These instructors not only are training our officers, they're also conducting trainings on a frequent basis to our businesses, our schools, our organizations within the village, and then the residents themselves. So by providing these officers with training in CPR and active shooter response training and stuff like that, it's a valuable asset not only for our officers, but for the entire community. Our instructors actually came up with a training this year, which is a joint training with the Bartlett Fire Protection District. It's called Rescue Task Force, and that is how we work together in an active shooter, high casualty response. And that training received an honorable mention to Irma's Innovative Risk Management Award. So that was pretty nice to see that. So going forward with this year's budget, we were actually able to reduce the professional development by $27,000. And then also our professional associations, we added no new associations we belong to. Being part of these associations sometimes is a requirement to receive mutual aid. We're part, we're part of a lot of task force that if we have a major crime or traffic crash, that we pool outside agencies. So being part of NIPIS and being part of MAREP and MCAT is associations, those are the high-dollar value associations. We belong to those so we can receive mutual aid from outside agencies during times of high profile. And then also, we receive valuable outside resources and training through a lot of the associations we're part of. That being said, we were able to reduce some of the, because we lost people that were part of those organizations and we haven't fully replaced them, that budget also was reduced by $1,000. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay, moving on to public safety expenditures and the light item justification. So I just want to go over and give you some of the highlights of some of the different percentage change. So starting with advertisement, you'll see that we're asking for a $1,000 increase or a 50% change from last year, and that's for recruitment advertising. Reason being is we're, no longer are the days where you have one police list and advertise for it in the last two years. We went through at least three different police testing cycles, which we, we get a lot of benefit from organizing, from advertising on the blue line. Actually, we just started advertising our CSO position on the blue line. We've had the most candidates ever apply for positions so far. It's at approximately 35. So that's part of the reason there. We also, per law, have to advertise in newspapers. And then just trying to get some, you know, cultural diversity, we actually put out our information. It's called to an organization called the National Minority Report, and they help target different minority groups, just trying to help our recruitment efforts. The next item under Communications, you're going to see an increase of DUCOM fees. So the DUCOM fees are expected to increase 9.7 from 774,521 to 849,586 this upcoming budget. In addition, DUCOM fees increased 11.3% from the 2223 budget to our current budget. So in regard, we reached out to DUCOM, just trying to figure out why we keep getting these increases. And these, this is the information that they shared with us. So a lot of it's based on police department's authorized strength, and they use this five-year smoothing average, which ours was still at a 1.4 officer count impact due to the lower officer count, 56 from five years ago dropping off. 12 DUCOM agencies stayed the same or had a reduction, while ours did not. They also mentioned that their operations budget expense increased by 7.85% with the addition of five new management positions. And 89.888% of DUCOM's budget is for personnel costs, salary and benefits. Most other categories of the budgets were reduced. They also mentioned the new Telecommunicator Union Contract has negotiated a cost of living of 4.25%. That was applied to all DUCOM agencies. So recently, I had an opportunity to be a part of the executive board. We have a seat there, and I feel in for Mayor Wallace's seat to vote on this budget. And just to let you know, we were the only voting no agency who was against this budget, even with all the concerns that I raised with the two high percentages of increased costs and, you know, just telling them that they weren't really reading the room. I mean, there's a lot of positions that I would like or other departments that we have in the village would like, but, you know, we have to be responsible for our taxpayers. And I just didn't think it was the right move for them to increase the cost and pass it on to us and other agencies, just so they can get some supervisory personnel. So just kind of give you a little background, and I know that was kind of asked last year, trustee Hopkins, by you, but also want to let you know that we are trying to defend the, the village's budgetary process by bringing it up. Unfortunately, no other municipality saw it the way that we did.
So they said we had a lower officer count, and that impacted our fees. Do we also have a higher call volume into them?
So it doesn't go by call volume. It goes by your authorized strength. So even though our authorized strength is 63, and we've never been able to fill that benchmark, for that five-year average, they keep it that way. So the acting executive director has mentioned to me, if we continue with DUCOM, eventually our five-year rolling average will go down, and we should see some type of savings. What that is, I don't know, because I shared with you just the past two years, how high the increases have went. And I even displayed my displeasure with the acting executive director that this is even higher than what inflation is, or even higher than what our budget is, with our budget also includes insurance and pension liabilities as well, too.
Do we have other options besides DUCOM?
Yes, so there is potentially other options that we, we could look at upon the, the board's discretion. Like, for instance, Displayne's is looking to switch. They had their own dispatch center. They tried to go to Northwest Central. Unfortunately, they were too big for Northwest Central, so they tried joining DUCOM, but they weren't part of DuPage County. So they're ending up going with Cook County. And I reached out actually to their chief, who was more than willing, if depending on which direction the board wants to go, would be willing to meet with myself and Paula and the Fire Protection District Chief, just to go over different options. One option potentially that might be out there, but we would need to see if they're looking for, if they would still take vendors, is actually Northwest Central. That's currently who Streamwood uses, and their budget is extremely lower than what we pay. And we just found out that Wheeling went to Northwest Central Police and Fire, and the total with their two police and fire only paying approximately $300,000.
So what is our, do we have contractual obligations? Do we have dates, time limits to, to investigate these other options and choices?
So unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to try to find something with, you know, before this budget's approved. It would probably be a long process, because we would need to probably work with maybe a consultant and the attorneys in regard to, are we on the hook for, not only do we pay our DUCOM fees, but we're obligated for DUCOM building fees when they build their new facility. So we, we would need to find out if we would still be responsible for our share. We would need to find out about the police radios, antennas, stuff like that. But even looking at that, there may be a possibility in a few years, if we're only, if we would only get charged the same amount as, let's say, Wheeling, that we might be able to make it up in a few years. Once again, I don't know. That's something that we would need to spend some time.
And chief, the Fire District would have to go with us, right?
That is correct. And reason being is, you know, we work hand in hand. You would just hate for somebody to have a medical emergency, let's say they stayed with DUCOM, and then they would have, DUCOM would have to transfer to go to Northwest Central to get ahold of us. But talking to the fire chief at our last seminar that we were at, it sounded like if that was the board's direction, he would be more than happy to be part of the discussion to see if it would be feasible or not.
Is the fire department paying the same as what we're paying?
I don't, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I don't have the sheet in front of me. I do know that Chief Gurbani hasn't been very happy with the fees that they've been paying as well, too.
This has went up 40% last year roughly, and 9% this year. Are we going to see another 9% next year?
That's, that's a great question. That's something that I asked the executive board, and I've also asked the, the acting director, because it's just not sustainable.
You can't even plan it.
A million dollars before the end of next year, you know, if it keeps going that, that direction.
I mean, we don't, we don't know what the changes DUCOM is going to make internally, if that'll have some impact and, you know, if our smoothing numbers work out. But I think it's worth the conversation to figure out what all the components are that we need to take a look at and perhaps bring back to you, you know, a cost to do an analysis to switch and, and check and see if we can even get into another dispatching unit.
Yeah. Especially since it's going to be a couple of years to do it, or there about.
It's a complex question, no doubt. And it's emergency services, so you want to get it right.
And they base this on our authorized strength? Is that what you said? Authorized?
That's correct. Authorized strength.
Of 63 officers.
It's not based off of actual, and that was one of the discussions I had, too, is, you know, as of a few years ago, you know, as I mentioned to you, we have not been able to get to full strength. We try very hard, and we're still doing very well trying to get the applicants, but, you know, we all got hired under the Bill Clinton grant, so a lot of us, who we lost in all that age and experience and knowledge, we're at the retirement age. So that's why we're just, as quickly as we can, just trying to fulfill our, our personnel needs.
And how long has it been since we have been at, at full strength?
Since we've been at full strength? So there's been times like through the year where we've actually got to full strength, but those, a number of those officers have been in the academy, which the academy and the field training program takes up to six months. So currently, we're getting ready, we, we offered two conditional job offers to two officers. They passed everything, they're waiting to take the medical. So with that, we would still be down two officers from that point on.
So that would put us at 61 with those two officers?
That would be correct.
And who determines the authorized strength? How is that determined?
So the authorized strength has been in the budget, and then there's been discussions actually with the village board. And in the past, when Chief Ulrich was here, that was the last time we looked at the different authorized strength. And our entire goal was to actually fulfill, so we would have permanent five beats, what it's called. And because of some of the shortage of not being there, we do have proper strength. I just want to reiterate that on the street, but this would supplement when our officers have requested time off or training needs or stuff like that. And the number of 65, or 63 authorized is really based on calls for service and geography of Bartlett and other different factors that come into play.
So that, so we would look at those in arrears to determine if we needed to increase that, correct? Like if one year we had a higher amount of calls or the village expanded? Is that how that's determined?
Yeah, so also, also too, you know, we look at different, like data sets. There, there's different, you know, standards for how many officers you want per population, and that was part of the whole thing that went into this. I feel very comfortable with the 63. You know, there might come a point down the road with the new middle school that's opening up, that we may have to ask for an additional position to cover that cost, but that wouldn't be for a few years away.
And there's a national metric and standards that get folded into that as well.
Okay.
Taking a look at uniforms, it went up 5%. So in regard to uniforms, per the new collective bargaining agreement, uniform allowance increased from $650 to $900 per year. And the protective vests also increased from $650 to $900 per year. We are budgeting for seven new police officers and 10 replacement bulletproof vests, which last no more than five years in this upcoming budget. If you take a look at equipment maintenance materials, we're asking for a $500 increase. So our building is five years old, and we want to, we treat it very well and we take care of it. But sometimes the repairs are just more costly, like everything else, and they're more specialized, too. So if, for instance, if we have some type of breakdown in the jail cell, we can't just call out a locksmith. It's a, it's a specialized person who takes care of those locks. Same thing, too. You know, we try to keep good upkeep of all of our key fob systems and our bicycles for bicycle patrols and our sliding glass door that brings us to the patrol area. So on the next page for community relations, we are asking for a 14% increase. And reason being for that is we're so blessed out of the support of the board, as you know, that, that is one of our strengths, is how we engage with the community. And last year, we participated in 22 major different community events, including the Easter egg extravaganza, open house, fishing derby, Memorial Day Parade, Fourth of July Festival and Parade, National Night Out, Halloween Parade, Oktoberfest, Marion Bright. We also participated in eight different Halloween truck or trunk or treat events, three neighborhood outreach events. different Halloween trunk or treat events, three neighborhood outreach events. And we had two nice outings at Deer Park Circle, trying to connect with their residents, and station tours. So, you know, we have a nice following on our social media page, and that's one thing that people look forward to, is our special events. I have my peers that are in awe when I tell them we have close to 1,000 people, ten are open house. And most recently, when we went out to Deer Park Circle for our Halloween event, Streamwood was in awe of just all the officers that were out there engaging and handing out giveaways and playing soccer with everybody. They're like, "Our staff would never do this. How do you do it?" And that's what we call the Bartlett Way, and we understand there's a cost to it. But I know a lot of you have been to, like, the books for badges event, super successful. You know, we partnered with the library and Fire Protection District, and people had a lot of good time. And that's something that they look forward to, is the giveaways as well, too.
I have a question regarding that, actually. So we moved the Fourth of July Fest Parade to Saturday. I just wanted to know if there's a savings there because of that, and also going from five days to four days?
So in regard to the parade, there probably won't be any savings, because we need to staff it the same. But you probably, we probably will be seeing a savings in regard to the Fourth of July Fest. Reason being is, as you mentioned, it's going from a five-day fest to a four-day fest.
Yeah, for the next four years, too. So that's good.
So next thing that you notice is 13% increase for equitable sharing. Will kind of talked about some of our new capital outlay. But for those of you who are not familiar with equitable sharing is, we have an officer, Officer Amy Jenkins, who's assigned to the DEA Task Force. And she's assigned to the airports, to the train station, and to the bus terminals. And she works with other Illinois law enforcement agencies and the DEA. And any type of money that they seize from illegal drug funds, we get a portion of that, which is in our equitable sharing fund. So currently, in our equitable sharing fund, we have over $1 million. So I know that seems like a lot of money, but once again, it's all based on the seizures that Amy makes and her team, and if that will continue. Whenever there's a portion that we get, it's reviewed by the finance director and the village attorney. We refer to them as the DAG, and they go in there. And they can only be used for specific purposes. And anytime we use it for specific purposes, that's the reason why, at the time, the village wanted to use our drone, and we couldn't, because it just had to be for law enforcement purposes only. So mostly, you can use them for, like, training. You could use them for equipment. And they even kind of changed the rules. So even for the drone this year, we had to fill out an application and got it approved, just to see if they would approve that type of equitable sharing funds. But we already talked about what's in the capital outlay with the evidence cameras and the drone. Our service agreements, we had many discussions last year in the budget in regard to our mobile video recorders. Those were just actually installed last week, and they're going well. And they actually implement what our body worn cameras, which you see that all of our staff are wearing. And that's actually going very well, too. And it really just helps the professionalism, and it just shows the community that we are just a highly trained police department that just serves with care and protects with confidence. We've had one complaint, and it was really nice just to see the body camera footage, just to see how professional our officer was. And I can let you know, after reviewing that incident, we haven't heard back from the complainant. And that's just the benefit that we have with these things is, you know, it just catches our officers doing the right things. But also, too, from the continuation would be our Taser 10s, which we just implemented as well. So the Taser 10s are what would be referred to as tasers or conducted electrical weapons. If you recall, we signed a five-year agreement with Axon. We're on year two of five. And all of our equipment integrates with each other. So if any of the officers pull their guns out of their holster, the body cameras will activate. If they open up the doors of the squad cars, the body cameras activate. If somebody switches the taser to put the laser device on, our body cameras activate. And they'll activate the body cameras around us. So we are just seeing a lot of different benefits with better report writing, because for the most part, unless it's a severe use of force, they're allowed to take a look at our reports. And it's really just, I think, improved, as I said, the professionalism and the efficiency of the police department. And also included in there is, we had it in last year, it's called this Zetec cellphone mapping software. I'll have Will explain if you need more information on that. You know, a lot of our cases deal with cellphone technology and evidence. And this is what other police departments use, and this is what we've successfully been using in regard to our LPRs or license plate readers, to put stuff in a readable format, not only for that, but for our cellphone investigations, which could be anything from a sexual assault to missing persons case like that. And lastly, we're looking to use our equitable sharing for our flock camera systems. We've had, they've really come in really handy. Our biggest success, probably for the flock camera system, we had an individual a few months ago down Newport, just started discharging rounds. And we would have never been able to caught him or charge him or prosecute him if it wasn't for the evidence we built with the LPRs. Just the most recent LPR, some of you might have seen in the What's Happening in Bartlett, somebody posted a picture of a suspicious person that came to somebody's house and said they were pulling on door handles. It was because of the LPRs, we were able to figure out who it was in a very timely manner, and realize that person was just suffering some mental health issues, and there was no ill crime or related to. I can't tell you how many times we'll get a missing person involving elderly people with Alzheimer's, and we get to figure out, you know, we get to use other people's flock camera views just like they can use ours. And we're able to find people and do things so much more efficiently than we have in the past, while protecting people's privacy as well, too.
Fantastic.
So that concludes our budget, unless there's any further questions.
Just a question on insurance. I see it's got a pretty big jump since 2022. Is that something that gets priced out yearly, quarterly, or biyearly? How is it shopped?
I'm going to have to probably defer to Todd on that one. I'm sorry.
Talking about the insurance under the personnel?
Employee group insurance, correct.
Yeah, plinkers. So we do a premiums review every year, and you're showing, it's showing here a line item 2% increase. And so this year's premiums actually came to average about 5% increase, which, which is normal. I would say it's normal, not excessive as far as insurance premiums go. This is an allocation per employee, per department. So we only raised it across the board 2%. We did have a little bit of room between actual and what we were allocating to each department in this current year. So that's why we're only raising the 2% allocation, even though the premium is closer to a 5% increase.
I was just looking from 2022 to 2024, the big, the jump. I just wondered what was the reason for the jump. And then it's kind of stabilized for the last two years.
Right. So that was, we could go back and look at the number of employees, because it's going to be based on how many, how many employees they had. If we go back to...oh, there it is. I'm just authorized staffing here. So we went from 74 to 77 to 79, back in 21, 22. You know, that's when we were getting that force up to speed. And then it's been at 81 for the last three years. That's why the insurance costs level off, just because of the number of employees.
And in terms of shopping around, you remember last year, we worked with IPBC to take a look and see if we could join their pool in our, our claims experience. And some of our higher claims knocked us out of the box for that. But we, Janelle and I have been talking to IPBC on a regular basis to, you know, they've monitored our claims experience to see when we're ready to enter their pool, when we'd be able to do that. And we're pretty close to that threshold. I would say, you know, we, we will probably be asking them to do that analysis in either the next year or the year following, because we're pretty close to their thresholds. And then...
What determines that threshold?
Pardon?
What determines that threshold?
Our claims experience and the cost of those particular claims. So, you know, that is something that we, that we monitor outside of the rate review that Todd talked about.
Excellent. So if there's no other questions, once again, I just want to thank you, Village President Wallace, and all the Board of Trustees, for all of your ongoing support, not only with our budgetary items, just to equip our officers with the tools, tactics, and training we need, but just the support we get at all the different community events. It really means a lot to me and my staff when we host some type of event, and we see you there, what your family's just having as much fun as we are there, too. I also want to thank Paula, just, you know, just for being there for support and being a springboard for me, just running by different ideas, just trying to get the police department where we need to, to develop our young staff. And I'd be remiss, too, if I didn't thank, once again, Rob and Will, and then Pete, Tom, and Kyle, who are behind me, and all of our staff who put together this budget, and most importantly, for Kelly, for all the hard work and changes that she did, for all the different many revisions, just making sure that we had a very just polished presentation. And, you know, lastly, I just want to thank all the residents, businesses, and organizations. We are just so blessed to be supported by this community. As I mentioned, I talk to my peers from other towns, and they can't believe the support that we get, or how much people love us, not only seeing us at special events, but when we go to calls for service, and just doing things the Bartlett Way, or even just showing our human side on our Facebook page and social media pages. So with that, once again, thank you very much, and thank you for all your time and all your support that you give our police department.
Thank you, Chief. Chairman, the port?
Yes. I guess we'll move on to, we're doing administration and professional services now?
You going to try to jump into that yet, or are we going to bounce that?
I can do a quick, I'll do, I can squeeze the Finance Department in, and then in time for a short break before our next.
All right. Finance, it is.
Right, Todd?
All right. The Finance Department starts on 100, this is 141, page 141. Some of the highlights that we're talking about in the, on this first page, one of the big highlights was the closing of the Brewster Creek TIF. I know that that was a big deal. We were able to pay off all of the developer notes, all of the developer debt, as we closed that off and made all the final payments in December. So that turned out very well. We're also able to pull that increase in the EAV onto our, onto our next levy that shouldn't increase our, our tax rates. With Chris here next to me, also with the GIS assistance, I think you'll see a lot of improvement on our budget, especially the capital improvement plan. We've updated that for the 2024, 2028 capital improvement plan that's on our website, along with showing the rates and how our rate goes towards capital operating expenses. In our last meeting, we talked a lot about e-billing and focusing more on that. So that's something that we'll be doing going forward. We'll be bringing different options on how we can promote more e-billing, become more efficient with allowing the residents to get their bill, pay their bill, other water and sewer bills. We've been talking a lot about sales tax rebates with new business in town, and we're excited about that. We'll continue working with that. Chris can talk more about Microsoft 365 and how we've been working with that over the last year. We don't have any personnel changes as far as positions go. We did have one retirement, so we're moving some personnel around, but no changes as far as the number of staff. Our professional development has remained pretty much the same as far as a couple of state conferences through our general, our Government Finance Officer Association. So we are just members of the national and then the state association. As far as our line item in personnel, again, you see our group insurance, the way we talked about earlier, basically 2% increase without any changes to personnel. Under employee retirement contributions, that's where our IMRF contribution, or the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund is, for each employee. That, that rate actually went down 3% from the prior year. That was partially due to a lot of our employees now being Tier Two, as opposed to Tier One. The increase is related to our FICA and our Medicare in that, in that line. So overall, in our, in the Finance Department, we're, we're not having any big changes as far as costs or other things. Down at the bottom, you'll see transfers. So we are transferring, proposing to transfer $2 million to the municipal building fund. So that's from the general fund surplus that we've talked about in the past, that would be going to help maintain the village buildings in the, in the years to come. And the transfer to 59 and Lake Street TIF, $360,000, that would be from the auto mall. That would be the other 50% of the auto mall. 50% is rebated back. 50% is going towards the 59 and Lake Street TIF loan that was taken from other village funds. So overall, it's like a big increase, 162%, but the finance operations part of that budget is a 2% increase. So not a lot of change in there. There were no capital outlay or changes in personnel to talk about. So unless there's, I'm going to skip ahead quick to professional development. Professional services, that's where, this is on page 115. This is where we have some of our general professional services, our actuarial service for the police pension. We split that with the police pension. Professional planners, we don't have anything budgeted there. If we do approve TIF on Lake Street, then we would be creating a new budget and putting that in the, in the TIF fund. Our legal services, with the changes in our attorney, and have not had any kind of significant change, so we're still budgeting the same with that. This is where we also charge miscellaneous engineering services. Social services, that includes the police psychologist and also the police social worker. The social worker cost did go up $11,000. That was just due to the agency we're working with. That's just to get them back up to speed where a normal, it's still a good value for the village with what we are charging. I have a breakdown on the next page. Full-time social worker then would be $77,558, with the psychologist, total of $26,000. So that's how that's broken out.
And we moved those from the police budget to this budget so that, because it is actually professional services, more so than a police expense.
Right, right, a couple of years ago.
Easier to track.
And with that, any questions on that? I'm going to turn that over.
Quick question. I know you said you had the goal of e-billing, of getting more people on there, and it looks like it doubled, but we're still only at like 11.6% in our e-billing. Are there any goals surrounding, like, what we could possibly get to in a year? Like, do we think we can get a third of people on that?
I haven't set any goals. I think we need to look at the program, which route we want to take, as far as how we're going to push that out with, as far as, and then what kind of access to billing activity, billing history that we're going to provide for the residents. So I think we're going to have to look at the whole system and see what would be possible in that regard.
I think it'll be growth year over year, rather than a hard number.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Chris then, our IT coordinator. He's going to talk about...
Joe have a question?
Uh, is that Joe? Yeah, I think it was Joe. Joe, we're going, we're going to turn it over to Central Services, if that's all right.
Yeah, are we, are we trying to wrap by seven o'clock?
With finance, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to review the Central Services budget. As we all recall, Central Services... Budget. As we all recall, Central Services Budget is a budget created for allocating or paying for those expenses that aren't easily attributable to any one department. So it covers everything from building maintenance services for, like, HVAC, or elevators, or mosquito spraying, or printing the Bart letter, and also IT and GIS staff and services. This year, uh, we are not asking for any personnel. Um, under our capital outlay, uh, it's, it's light compared to some other years. Uh, one of the reasons for that is we're not doing any huge purchases of desktops or other types of servers and computers. Um, if you look at the first item on our capital replacement, it's a SQL Server, uh, software. This is the database software that runs our various systems, like our ERP, or Police Records Management, our GIS services. Um, that, like, everything else I'm gonna talk through today is, is needing to be replaced, either because it's no longer supported by, uh, the company that provides, in this case, Microsoft, or the hardware's no longer being provided, supported by the, the hardware vendor. Um, uh, the next item is iPad replacements. This is, uh, for, for cellular-based iPads, uh, that are used throughout the village. Um, again, they're, they're getting old, and Apple only provides, uh, support for so long before they expect you to replace those. Um, network attached storage, um, this is data storage that we use for, uh, everything from, um, GIS aerials to, um, museum files to police phone dumps. Um, again, that hardware is, uh, at end of life, according to the manufacturer, so if, if it was to break, they would offer no support. So, again, it's one of those things, if you can't have a maintenance agreement, then you.
The hardware's all, all here? It's not like a cloud-based?
So we, uh, we moved the majority of our files, uh, to the cloud when we implemented Office 365, so almost all of our user, well, pretty much all of our user files. Uh, there's certain file types that just don't do well, for example, GIS files. Uh, there's just too much interaction. They're, they're almost like a database file, so they're just, you can't cloudbase them. Uh, same thing with kind of images and, and those kind of things. They, they just don't perform well, and they're, most of them are used onsite anyway. Um, other data is just of sense of nature, it's like phone dumps, we'd never put out there. Um, so, we're, we've moved almost as much as I think we can. We, we might have a little more that we can move, but this is, this is relatively cheap storage that we, we keep onsite for these other uses. Um, item number four is, again, copiers that are reaching to kind of their end of life and are more prone to break down.
How many copiers are, are there being budgeted?
There's three. So the Finance Department, the Police Administration, and Police Investigations.
Because the Police Department has three of them in here at 8,000. I'm just, oh, that's maintenance grid, I apologize.
Yeah, and so there's, there's the purchase of the copier, and then you pay per click.
Okay.
So we purchase all the copiers, not lease?
We do, because, you know, as, as our old Finance Director used to tell me, that why would we pay anybody else interest on something we can already pay for? So, we'd rather pay ourselves the interest, because they have no value, pretty much, at the end of life, anyway. Um, number five is a, a check printer, and we have one sold check printer in the whole village to print all our accounts payable and what few payroll checks we still do, so, um, it's important that, that doesn't break down. Um, and number six is a projector for the Village Hall Training Room, which is over eight years old and, and difficult to get parts for.
And, um, I know it's a de minimis amount, but on the iPad replacements, how many, um, iPads are we replacing?
So those are four iPads. They're, they're pretty much the basic iPads, but we do get them with cellular, because they're used out in the field by either Public Works or, or Buildings, or PDS staff. So they, they need to have cellular so that they can communicate with either Open Gov or the, the GIS.
Thank you.
Uh, so moving on, uh, to professional, or, uh, to our professional development, uh, this has increased slightly. Um, we did add a, uh, IT technician this, this year, um, so we have additional cost for that, for additional training for them. But also, the, the training costs have just become incredibly high. Um, for example, GIS classes are $900 a day, so if we want to send them for a two-day class, it's, it's 1,800 bucks. And, uh, we, we do take advantage of all the free training we can get, but unfortunately, the, you know, technology's constantly changing, and in order for our staff to be up to speed, we, we have to buy training. Um, Professional Associations, uh, pretty much the same as last year. We did, uh, add, uh, URISA, or the Urban and Regional Systems Association. Uh, this is a national association for our GIS staff that provides various resources for training and, and, uh, professional development. Um, as far as our overall, uh, changes, um, really the, the materials and supplies, again, this, this is everything from paper products to, um, printer toner. It's, it's all these things. It's inflation is pretty much what it comes down to. Um, all the prices increased for that. Um, other than that, uh, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer.
The mobile app, and the, like, request service, have we looked into, like, what, I see that's like $10,000 a year. Have we looked into, like, what it would be to develop an app with?
Develop an app for ourselves?
Yeah.
So the, the, keep in mind that, so that, that mobile app is really our citizen request system, so if you've ever made a request to the village, it's a, it's a web-based or a software as a service service. So we don't have to host any of that service. They maintain it. They provide, uh, what I think is a pretty good service for the cost. Um, and this year, it went up some because we added that notification. So there's the mobile app, and now, and our departments make use of it quite, quite well, especially the Police Department and Public Works. So if there's an accident, or there's a road closure, or there's some kind of interruption, they're sending out alerts, and, and actually, because I'm always commuting in to, to the village, I'm, I'm very appreciative of what I get in an alert that says, "This road's closed," and I, and I know I can move myself.
That is a nice question.
So, uh, I, I think for the, I mean, well, compared to what other villages are paying for similar services, we're really getting the bargain.
I think Chris is being modest, because way back in the day, you're the one who designed our original one and, and created it, and then we.
Oh, yeah, the one.
To this one.
Yeah, we use that for.
We outgrew the one we built.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, we can close this portion of the 2024, 2025 Proposed Operating Budget Review. We can pick up later with the Administration portion.
Thank you, Chairman Laporte. I will entertain a motion to recess the committee of the whole meeting.
Moved.
By Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Gunstein. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Swansky?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Ganzie?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins? Laporte?
Yes.
We are re-turned. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the reconvening. I'll entertain a motion to reconvene the committee of the whole meeting.
Moved.
Second.
By Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Swansky. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Laporte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Ganzie?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
With that being said, we will move on to Town Hall. If anyone would like to address the, uh, Committee of the Whole Meeting, um, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone online like to address the committee?
No, ma'am.
That being said, we'll move on to standing committee reports for the committee. Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
President Wallace, tonight we have one item on our committee, and that is the Get Fresh Project. Uh, the petitioner is requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot fence within the required 40-foot yard. The chain link fence would be located 20 to 28 feet from the north property line of Shiferal Road. The Plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a required public hearing, reviewed the petitioner's request, and recommended approval at their March 17, 2024 meeting. But that said, I just wanted to see if anybody has any questions?
Do not.
If not, you will send this on to the Board for Approval, next meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Um, and now, once again, Chairman Laporte, live from.
Forever.
Florida Convention.
Arizona.
Arizona.
Yeah, thank you, Mr.
Work, Arizona.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, we will continue our 2024, 2025 Proposed Budget Review. We'll hand it off to the staff for further review.
Who's on the hot block?
Admin.
Admin's boring, come on.
Thank you for allowing me to present our, our boring budget tonight. Um, ours is gonna be on page 94. Um, so starting with, uh, some of our highlights here on page 95, actually, uh, the Administration Department's budget is seeing an 18% increase this year. Um, however, nearly 70% of that comes from our Economic Incentives line item, which is for the auto mall, uh, rebates, as well as the Aldi rebates, and then another 50,000 will come from the advertising line, um, line item, which will be for, um, our branding expenses. Um, moving on to page 96, uh, the village has added two, uh, new mediums, uh, for direct communication with the residents this past year. Um, the first one we had, Chris had talked about, our Bartlet Connect app. Um, now we're allowed, or we're able to, uh, do push notifications to the residents, so, um, this has happened, helped in, uh, emergency situations with accidents, letting the residents know road closures. Um, PW used it a lot this last year, um, when we had snow events, kind of letting folks know how to plow the snow correctly, to not have buildups at the bottom of their, uh, driveways. Um, and then our second, uh, form of direct communication was the Trending Now, um, which is our new Elite News, E-newsletter, um, which started, uh, in the beginning of July, um, in 2023. Uh, it's a bi-weekly newsletter compared to our bi-monthly, uh, Bart letter, so it kind of fits in between, you know, stuff that might just go on our website and stuff that would go on a, on the Bart letter. Um, kind of helps with more time-sensitive information, those sorts of things. Um, as I said, it started in July. We have, uh, a little over 800 subscribers at this point, um, and, uh, we've had about 17 issues so far of that. Um, looking at page 97, um, each of the past few years of our, uh, tree lighting, uh, we've seen an increase in our entertainment and fun for that, and turned it into the, the Merry and Bright branding that we've, we've seen. Uh, this year, some of the changes, we moved the, the Glen Allen Tree, as we call it, from the corner of Devon and, and South Bartlet Road to the center of the park for a more central location for the tree lighting. Uh, we also added a ice sculpture this past year, and then changed our reindeer benders to, for a brighter and, uh, a little bit better, uh, reindeer look there. Um, the History Museum celebrated, uh, the Bartlet Depot's 150th anniversary this year as well. Um, residents participated in North Avenue Walking Tour, and, uh, we also played host to a pup art, uh, exhibit in the Link Hallway. Um, and that was part of the DuPage War Hall, uh, Pop Art Challenge that they had this past summer. Um, looking at page 98, after 11 years of phone calls and emails and meetings, and Tony and Scott and Bert and Christie, um, with over 20 Chicagoland grocery stores, uh, the new Aldi finally opened in the streets of Bartlet. So, uh, the building is Aldi's newest prototype, and it offers a neighborhood-style grocery store option right downtown. Um, the village is looking to roll out the new com, community brand, as I had kind of mentioned in the beginning. Uh, three options were presented to the Village Board at a, a recent committee of the whole meeting. Um, the brand would give the village a fresh update for our current Never Far Away branding. Um, we'll work towards creating a, uh, positivity in the community. Additionally, it would look, uh, we'd be looking to use it for business recruitment and for tourists and to pull, um, residents from our local town, or our nearby towns in the Bartlet to shop and dine. Um, looking on page 100, our vacancy rate continues to be extremely low. Um, the Bartlet Town Center filled a couple vacancies with, it's this Venezuelan restaurant, Happy Hangout. Um, additionally, the Hyundai and Genesis dealerships, uh, recently opened, allowing residents to buy a brand-new car in the village. Um, looking at 101, I touched a little bit.
That's the most exciting part of your speech, come on!
I thought the Aldi was the most exciting. Um, the, uh, um, strategic plan, uh, coming out of strategic planning, um, the Board had discussed, uh, the possibility of looking into a, a Tiff on Lake Street, uh, given the, the blight and underused and unused areas on our northern entrance there. Um, a Tiff consultant was, was hired for that, and an annexation agreement is expected to go before the Board this spring, uh, for their review and consideration. Um, speaking of, uh, Tiffs, moving on to page 103, looking at the highlights from the past year, uh, the Brewster Creek Business, uh, Park, uh, Tiff closed with an EAV of a little over 91 million, uh, up from $3 million in 1999, so, uh, quite a jump there. Uh, and there's still some infill sites that, that, uh, will increase that as well. Um, that's pretty much it for our narrative portion. Um, I talked about, let's see, on, uh, I think, uh, page 105, I talked about our Trending Now. Um, we have the little over 800 subscribers, but we're also getting a 75% click rate on that, so that's, it's actually quite good. So, when we're having these emails sent to folks, um, 75% of them are actually clicking into it and trying to see what's going on in town, so that's, uh, really good to see. Um, looking at pages 108 and 109.
Hey Ray, when you started, I don't think they were talking about click rates, were they?
No, no, not at all.
You're measuring their click rate.
Keep coming.
Uh, 108 and 109, these conferences are, are generally unchanged from previous years, um, although we did budget for training for the, uh, Lake Forest Graduate School. Um, we did, uh, so that was, this is a two-day, uh, training for our supervisor-level employees. This is a continuation from last year. We had a director's training from that, and that's really just to kind of continue to build our bench, um, and help give our frontline supervisors, um, the information and, um, you know, receive the attention so that they can succeed there.
Is it a graduate school management, like, for municipalities? Or, for, for the Lake Forest, is it a graduate school, like, for municipal, or is it any kind of management?
Um, we were able to work with, um, Lake Forest Graduate School on, um, putting together a program for, um, supervisors that we, for skills that we found lacking in our staff. So it is communication, evaluation, um, presentation, and general supervisory skills.
Great, thanks.
Um, additionally, uh, we budgeted for tuition reimbursement for employees, um, who apply that are, um, fill out the application, are approved by HR and their, uh, department head, um, and that would be capped at 5,500 per requestor. Um, and this is a, a benefit that we had funded previously, um, and it just, uh, haven't recently, um, you know, it's, it's possible that there might be interest in the future, but, um, yeah, currently it's unfunded.
Is that any course that someone wants to take, or are there parameters for the tuition reimbursement?
Mm-hmm. So we revised the program. Um, it went dormant in, uh, 2018. It is based on the availability of funds. The, um, classes that, um, are available for, um, reimbursement have, they're a degree program or a trade school program that have direct correlation to the, um, job skills of the employee. Um, the employee is required to, um, remain in the service of the, the village for, um, two years after the completion of the course study. Um, it is available to employees that have been full-time with the village for at least two years. Um, the point of that study is to enhance their performance for the village. There's an application process that's submitted, um, by the employee. The change that we made, um, was that those applications are now submitted to HR, so it's a global look rather than being administered in each department. So it's more, um, a universal look, as well as, um, distributed, distributed more evenly. Um, most of the, um, tuition reimbursement, um, activity had been in the Police Department. Um, this. Most of the tuition reimbursement activity had been in the police department pursuing degree programs. So, we found that to be where most of those reimbursements were being made, and we'd like to bring it back, because as the chief has mentioned, we have a lot of new folks and starting to rebuild those benches and build more skills.
Sounds good, thanks.
Moving on to the professional association detail, these are all substantially similar. There's one change on the second page for the Milwaukee Road Historical Association that Pam is a part of, or is requesting to be a part of. She would reduce one of her current memberships, so that the cost would be substantially similar. Moving on to page 112, I discussed the advertising line item increasing due to the branding, same for the economic incentives line item due to the Aldi dealers, or the Aldi and the car dealership sales tax rebates. The community relations budget is seeing a bump with some additional funding going towards enhancing community events, and specifically Mary and Bright. Additionally, there's a slight bump for the Arts in Bartlett request for their three events, and that's explained on the following page as well. But most of that increase is coming from Ignite the Courage. They're a lead requestor this year, and they're requesting $8,000 from the Civic Group funding. And that pretty much covers it all. If you have any specific questions, we can go ahead and answer that.
The increased branding expenses, do we, I don't remember, does that include paid surge, or what's like the makeup of that $75,000?
That's the phase two of their plan, so Scott, you want to answer that?
Yeah. Phase two is photography, storytelling, story identification, and then figuring out where to place them. Those discussions are going to continue on over the next few weeks. We let them know that tonight was the budget, so we wanted to wait to hear that, but currently, there's a lot of different placements that A5 has held for us. For example, some work with WGN and different publications that they would find suitable. And also, part of that phase two after the rollout is the click rates and data collection.
Okay. And why is Ignite the Courage requesting this year instead of past years?
They didn't give a specific reason for their request. In their request, they outline what the funds would be used for, so they would be using it for their Smoke and Irons Festival, which is the two-day music festival, which, and their organization raises funding for families in Bartlett. It kind of originally, Ignite the Courage grew out of the Pink Heels Festival back in 2013. In 2017, they created a nonprofit, Ignite the Courage, and then since then, they've had the North Avenue Car Show and the Music Festival, which has recently been rebranded for the Smoke and Irons Music Festival.
I also have a question regarding that. Isn't Ignite the Courage part of the Oktoberfest itself?
No, they're not. They're not.
They were last year, not this year.
Not this year.
I thought they were part of that, and that's why, I thought it was like three or
four organizations together there, so they pulled out of that.
My understanding that the organizations that are putting out Oktoberfest are the Rotary, the Lions Club, and the Chamber of Commerce.
Correct.
Which is how it was originally, the first year?
Yes. And this is the first year they're requesting?
And then, the second year, Ignite the Courage went into Oktoberfest?
Yes.
I've only had it two years.
I'm sorry, I missed the first one.
So, the first year, they weren't there, the second year, they were there. Are we members of the Chamber of Commerce as a village? Do we sponsor them at the maximum level of a sponsorship?
We're one level below the maximum, I believe, but we also, too, have, there is some ancillary support that the village has. Some of the things we do, some of the breakfasts and the dinners are covered within the sponsorship, and some are not.
I'm just curious about funding their creation of a comprehensive strategic plan. I would think that would be funded from the members of the chamber.
You know, I would say that these applications are their requests, and you can fund them where you see fit.
I wasn't understanding what you were saying, I apologize.
The chamber is looking to fund the creation of a comprehensive strategic plan and assessing the current chamber model. In a memorandum sent by Sam Hughes.
Which is that for?
They didn't break out the costs for, right?
No, they did not separate any of the costs. They lumped it as, you know, we asked what the funding would go towards, and they said, you know, strategic plan, the, looking at the chamber model, and then.
Well, I think that the relationship that the village has with the Chamber of Commerce, and how we all interact and help one another and whatnot, you know, for what they're asking for, I don't have an issue with it at all.
I think it's $5,500. They're doing their work for a whole year for the village of Bartlett and promoting our businesses, and Ignite the Courage is two days, and it's $8,000, so I do agree that it's, I think the chamber does a lot to promote businesses within our.
Absolutely.
I don't know what their strategic plan is and that, but I do think that they do promote businesses within the town.
Well, I'm sure it would incorporate some of the local businesses that we have in promoting those, you know.
I agree with you.
I think the chamber does great work, but we also have to keep in mind that we employ a full-time employee, an economic development director, on our staff. So, a lot of communities don't have an economic development person, and they rely on their chamber to do that heavy lifting. So, that's all I'm going to say right now. I have a question about our IRMA premiums. They are steadily, from 2021 to now, have steadily gone up, and I understand insurance does go up. The deductibles have also gone up. Have we seen this with other communities, or have we looked at other communities, and have we looked at other insurance companies to provide our liability?
So, IRMA is a pool. And our experience, so our, our costs to IRMA are based on our experience and our safety record, and those are smoothed out over a period of five years. We have had a couple of expensive experiences with them, a couple of lawsuits that have been very expensive, that are factored into those five, so we see it go up and down with IRMA. I do think that the pooling is the most effective way for us to keep a hold of those costs. IRMA does represent all our workers' comp and all our potential liabilities and cybersecurity. So, we get that through them. They also provide us a grant for our Kalia accreditation, so there are a lot of, and they also provide a lot of safety training and other training that we take advantage of. So, there's a lot of benefits to being part of IRMA besides just the coverage. We use them extensively for workers' compensation claims and investigations. And then, defense, too, because it's their attorneys that defend the village in that case.
Thank you. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Are there any further questions or comments regarding the proposed 24-25 operating budget?
No.
I just have a curious question. What's like the max we could have at like an economic incentives, because it seems like we have a lot of, like with ACE, Culversmore, Aldi, Auto Mall, like, is there like a max? Like, if something else were to come in, would it be hard for us to manage?
I think if we get a significant request, we, that would go beyond what we have budgeted, we would bring that to the board. You know, we weigh the pros and cons of that, the ROI on those incentives. As you know, when we get something that I think would break our budget, we would bring it back to you. So, it's not, you know, we do want to plan for that, we do want to, you know, have something available in the budget, but I think if there was something amazing that would go beyond what we have earmarked, we would bring that to the board to make that adjustment based on what it is and what it brings to the village.
Okay, thanks.
There's a line item in here for trade shows, $5,000, and it's, it looks like there's four of them. What are those trade shows, and have we done these in the past, and have we have had any?
We've done them at various, various kinds, various levels. The mayor's been to ICSC, both in Las Vegas and in Chicago. Scott, you've been to some of those ones.
I've been quite a number of them, and we do budget for them. And to be honest, it depends on the vision of the strategic plan and the goals that are set. For example, if you were to proceed with this TIF adoption at Lake Street, and we have the new branding, that's when we're going to want to go to every one. So, it depends upon what sections of town are being developed. Back before we had the auto mall, and that TIF at Lake 59 was closing, we attended every one. When we were selling Site E, we budgeted for apartment development trade shows. We didn't, we had never budgeted for those before, but we own this land, so we bought it. So, a lot of it depends upon what's driving our time spent on which projects.
And some are ICSC in Chicago, some are some regional ones, and some national.
I just wanted to make sure that the shows that we're going to line up with our strategic plan moving forward. That was basically what I was trying to look for, and see if there's a metric that you're going to measure after you go to these shows, to see how the benefits, you know, are they weighing out, so.
Did I see that groundbreaking is coming up in the spring for Site E?
We'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Not a budget talk?
Yeah, it's a different one.
That's funny.
All right. Chairman Laporte?
Right, great. Very good. If there are no further questions or comments, we can close the 2024-2025 proposed operating budget review. Forward that off to staff for future votes.
Very good. Any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Ganzie. Please call the roll.
Trustee Swansky?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Ganzie?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?